Pete's BP on 542 Richland Avenue for a C2 license that includes wine and mixed beverages as a carryout only. And then another application is a safekeeping, a transfer of a safekeeping liquor license from the Smiling Skull Saloon LLC and Patio at 108 West Union Street to a North Moss Restaurants LLC at 63 North Court Street. And this is a license that includes wine and mixed beverages for on-premises consumption or in sealed containers for carryout. If you have comments about either of these, please get those to W. Walker, Clerk of Council by June 17th. Next is, do we have any communications from members of council? Quiet, quiet night tonight. Reports and communications from other elected officials? Anything from the mayor's office today?
Yes. Just a reminder that the Oxbow, Richland Avenue, the bridge is closed. If you, if you get too close, you can fall right in now. They've taken up a lot of the pavement. So, everybody remember to follow the D2 signs. It's really easy. I'm on the road every day and I haven't gotten lost yet. Tomorrow, tomorrow afternoon, 3:00 to 6:00, we're having an open house to view the plans for Columbus Road Lancaster project. 3:00 to 6:00, it's at...
86.
86 Columbus Road, Suite 105, which is Dedden's building there. So, there's plenty of parking. Council members are encouraged to come. Members, citizens of the city are welcome to come. There will be staff there to answer questions. We won't see final draft drawings, but we'll see conceptual drawings of what's going to go on. Okay? And I'm going to let the auditor just talk about Memorial Day Parade. You just told me starting time and stuff like that.
Right. Free breakfast at the American Legion from 7:00 to 9:00. The parade starts about 10:00, lines up about 9:30, and ends at the Union Street Cemetery for services. And the acting mayor will be there to present a proclamation and we'll have a speaker and it's usually a good, a nice ceremony. So, and everybody's welcome.
And it lines up on...
This one lines up like behind the middle school in that area. The Veterans Day Parade is different.
And there's also a Memorial Day ceremony at the ridges at 1 o'clock, Cemetery 2, and there will be various speakers there reminding us of the people who have been forgotten.
For clarification regarding the Columbus Road North Lancaster project, my understanding is that the project is finished with the details. There's no input from, this is just a communications attempt with the public. Is that correct?
Yes, we're viewing it as a, as just a kind of an open door session. What Acting Mayor Jim Sands was referring to is we won't have the level of detail on the plans that say a manhole's here. We will have the sidewalk portions that are going to be repaired and the other, the median strip and what that will be. Landscaping was removed from the plans in order to just allow Ron Lucas to work with the shade tree commission on what's going to work best there.
Is it correct in a stand, understanding that all new curbs will be going in?
We will do curbing.
Okay.
And again, if you're able to come out tomorrow night, you'll be able to see some of them.
Please, 6:00. 6:00. Anything else? Auditorium.
Well, I was just going to comment on a couple articles that have been in the paper in the last couple of days. One about the possible workers' comp rebate that we might get, which would be wonderful. So, everybody keep your fingers crossed about that. And the other article had to do with the local government funds and Senator Gentile is working on helping that along. And I guess if you read the paper today and saw, the figures are pretty startling when you see the changes in the last five years. And also the fact that I commented in there that we, our income tax collections would be down this year if it weren't for our collections through the CCA program that, that we contracted with to collect delinquent tax pay, taxes. So, so keep our fingers crossed. And if you have anyone you can comment to about that, if he gets that legislation going, that would be wonderful for the city. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Law Director Lang.
No report tonight, Mr. President.
All right. Well, let's move right on to ordinances for third reading. We only have one tonight. An ordinance for third reading. Ordinance number 4413, an ordinance granting a revocable license to Gator Guys LLC to permit a balcony at 63 North Court Street that will encroach over and upon the public right-of-way. This was introduced by myself. I'd like to move adoption of ordinance 4413.
Second.
And I have a motion to amend.
Okay. So, we have...
The ordinance?
Move to adopt and a second and...
I second it.
What's the proposed amendment?
The proposed amendment would be to reduce the width of the balcony from 36 to 24.
We'd have to withdraw the motion in the second order to get to the second motion. We've already got a motion to adopt and a second on the table.
I will withdraw my move to adopt this ordinance so that we can at least hear a proposed amendment if Member Butler would do this.
I will kindly remove my second.
Sure. Sorry, can you please repeat that just for clarification?
Yes, the motion to amend would be to reduce the side, the width of the balcony from 36 to 24 inches. And I do have some comments or some rationale for making this...
Was there a second amendment?
Yeah.
I'll second.
And I would like to acknowledge the work that's been made on the building and that that's been a definite improvement to the downtown area. And I'd like to acknowledge the comments that have been made from various citizens and business owners and other citizens and, and planners about this, considering different possibilities. But the reason I come to this conclusion of making a proposal to reduce it from 36 to 24 has three reasons behind it. One of them is acknowledging the recommendation of our staff, which we have discussed in previous hearings, we, our errands about the, the ordinance. And the recommendation of the code enforcement director was to encourage, if anything, an 18-inch non-habitable architectural feature. The planner and, and for that first reason, that recommendation of the 18-inch non-habitable feature, I did check city code for several other cities today. The city of Akron does not allow balconies, except for fire purposes up to 12 inches. I checked with the city of Columbus and they require obtaining an easement for projections over the city right-of-way. And I spoke with a city code enforcement officer and he said, in the 11 years he's worked with the city code office, they, to his recollection, I don't have written documentation, but he's worked there 11 years and has never had a request for an easement over the right-of-way in Columbus. The second reason that I'm proposing this is because of what I'll call future expectations. I know I probably incorrectly used the word in our earlier discussions of the precedent that it might set. And the law director's clarified for us that each revocable license application comes to us as a separate request. But I guess I would use the word that future expectations, very similar to when we have closings for Boogie on the Bricks. We allow free parking. So, the next group comes in for Bounty on the Bricks, and I'm only using this as an example tonight, but the expectation is there will be free parking. And so, I would draw the parallel that we can approve this one and the next revocable license will come in as a separate application, but I think that they will come in with an expectation or the memory of the fact that we have approved one at a 36-inch limit, if that would be approved. So, that's another reason for my moving to the 24. The third reason is safety and that we have heard reports from citizens and businesses. And I know when I've been on the Halloween patrol, we've reported on the citizen patrols into the police for glass bottles being lobbed off balconies. And I credit the landlord, Mr. Wharton, for putting restrictions into the lease about, but the dangerous activities might be committed by guests. And once again, I would draw a parallel argument that much like graffiti or insults being leveled at people during parties from balconies, that it's an anonymous kind of act and it's very difficult to, to catch that kind of act that happens. And that there, so it becomes very difficult for the city, the landlord, the property owner, or the police to, to do anything about those situations. So, it's for those three reasons that I think the, moving the 36 to 24 becomes what we had discussed is the possibility of a compromise. Mr. Wharton had said he needed to move along with a 36-inch. I understand that. But he also said last week that he would be willing to consider other, you know, compromises to that. And so, it's in that, taking that seriously, I'm going ahead and proposing the 24-inch.
Other comments from members of council on the amendment to reduce the width?
I'll, I'll say something from a planning point of view. I think that this process needs to be examined from a process point of view. Many people know I am the process wonk, so, sorry. Because it's not, people say, oh, you know, city council's not being business friendly because we're giving hassle. But at the same time, something that cities and businesses rely on is process. And if the process goes through and we're making a decision and then all of a sudden something interrupts that decision, you know, the thing is built or, you know, something else happens, you know, that doesn't, that's not fair to other businesses. And it kind of creates a, you know, I'll do it and then apologize later sort of atmosphere, which I don't think benefits the city and it doesn't benefit the citizens and doesn't benefit the businesses. Because everybody works well and, and things thrive when it's on a, on a level playing field. What I wish would have happened in this was that, you know, we can have the ability to have special sessions to do suspension and that the people who were putting this forward, they knew that May was an important time and, you know, leases needed to be signed and stuff, that they would have informed us and say, hey, we need, well, this is our drop-dead date. And that was never, you know, communicated strictly to us. And so, I think, you know, sometimes city council looks like it's a turtle crossing the road and it's going plodding along. But at the same time, we have a process that we need to do so that everything is fair and across the board, you know, for everybody. That's why I think I was just kind of, this whole process is just, gets my ire up as a planner.
Thank you. Other comments from council members?
So, I would just say, thank you, Chris, for bringing this back to everyone's attention and Chris for, again, talking about procedures. I think that's very important. I think you hit the points. I won't repeat those. And I do want to highlight again, everyone appreciates what this group of people have done for that building. I mean, we all appreciate that. But again, I think the three areas that Ms. Nysley again brought up are issues that we've discussed over and over and over again. And I don't think we're taking them into the, to full consideration when we, we make this decision. I know I have looked at that very closely. Following procedure is important and there is something to be said for a level playing field. And I know that the business owners that have spoken to me have said that to me. So, I don't need to hammer on anything else. I've already hammered in the past, but thank you for bringing that forward.
Thank you. I will speak as a, as a council member, not as president of council, on this issue. I think that we've spent a great deal of time considering this in every way we could imagine. The original proposal was a 48-inch balcony and the compromise proposal was to cut that down to 36 inches. And we have done that. And the, what's being proposed or what hopefully we can vote on tonight, whether it's amended or not, will be to allow a balcony. But the fact that the compromise that even the most vocal opponents suggested would probably work and satisfy them, when, when the first compromise was reached was to do this at 36 inches, and I think we're, we're there with the original language and so I don't feel that the amendment is necessary. Code Director Paskey, would you like to...
Can I just say something to that? When we vote on the third reading, that's when it's done. It's not done at the second reading. It's not, so when you say that it, that we compromised at 36 inches, that was what, for the second reading, you know, that was the, but it didn't go through all three readings. That means the citizens who didn't get to come in, who thought about it, who looked at 36 inches. So, that precluded that. So, I just want to make sure it wasn't a done deal at 36 inches. It never passed at 36 inches unless it got voted on tonight.
Of course, I didn't mean to, to insinuate that it was a done deal, just that that was the original proposed compromise and that's what the language, existing language asked for is 36 inches.
And I would just add, the most vocal opponents maybe were our staff in our administration. Yes, we had citizens come in who spoke very loudly and strongly about their opposition, but we also had administration who signed off and said, no, we did not think this was a good idea. So, I, I don't want to say that they don't have a voice because they certainly do.
They do and we have one of those individuals here now. Director Paskey, would you care to comment on this? And I've been invited here tonight. It'd be a shame if you didn't get to share your thoughts.
Share my thoughts? Well, the first thing I'd like to say is, you keep saying 36 inches in width. I think we need to clarify and say depth. Because width would be the width of the front of the building.
Thank you.
Let's get that right. Whatever it ends up being...
36 inches into the right-of-way.
36 inches in depth. So, when you, however you read it, you want to get it that way. Other than that, I'm here just to answer questions on it. So...
Do we have questions, Director Paskey?
Well, maybe, maybe you can remind us of what your thoughts were on a 48-inch or a 36 or whatever inch.
The, when it originally came to me, the 18-inch concept that was been thrown around for many, many a months now, for a year now, it seems like, the building, the existing masonry wall of the second floor of the building was approximately 12 inches thick, according to Mr. Valentor, the architect for the project. And the door was to be withheld back in the inner part of that wall. So, that would be about a 12-inch thick. And then the plans showed for a railing, which is customary, instead of going from inside a brick mold, inside a brick mold, to have a little architectural reveal and bring it out about six inches so you get a tool to mount it in there. That's where the 18 inches came from. So, it wasn't anything to do with code or anything like that. And that's when I start calling it an architectural feature because at that point it was just, so they can open the doors inward and then you'd have the depth of the thickness of the wall plus the six inches of the railing extending out in front of the door, much like it's right now over top of, Copycat, is it, on Union? Similar to that, where they open the door up and you're basically still within the room, but there's a railing there. So, that's how the original concept started and that's where the original idea of 18 inches came from.
But that's not what we were presented when it came to council. It was on, it was not recessed. It was on the face of the building, the doors.
No, the, the doors are still, I don't know how they ended up doing it, but the doors on the plans originally were still, they're not recessed by way of a recess in the wall. The thickness of the wall...
I understand.
...allows for the doors to be recessed. So...
Can you comment on the existence of other balconies or extensions from buildings within those two blocks of Court Street? In terms of sort of the number, the, the depth from, that they extend out onto the sidewalk?
To, everyone that I can think of down there have been there probably before we even had revocable licenses in our codes, with the exception of a couple. The most current one, the Carpenter Street projects, those, that was an existing one that I actually have pictures of it that shows that all they did was, because it had doors going out of that already, fixed what was there when they renovated that building. Probably the only one that has occurred in my time here would have been the People's Bank project, that they did allow that one to be built out a little bit. And I'd been here three weeks at the time, so, when that project occurred, so I probably missed that one. So...
Member Butler?
I don't have a question, but I appreciate your presence here. I guess I was just going to backstep and address the safety issues because perhaps I'm reading the review different than, than others, but my understanding is from reading what the fire department, the chief's comments were is that he didn't have an issue except for the capacity and that's been addressed, the capacity of people. His comment is here, "I would not have an issue from a fire perspective if it's no wider than 48 inches." So, I'm guessing he means, you know, deeper than.
Yeah.
So, that would be one of the safety issues. And the other one is from the police department and the police chief says that he has concerns with police access during response to calls such as noise, parties, et cetera. Would consider the lease restrictions controlling the access. So, I guess from a safety perspective, I feel that some of these issues have already been addressed from the lease agreement as well as our discussions and requests. I think any balcony regarding of the depth would be, would have some issues, both pro and con, with safety. Any open window is going to have safety issues. We've seen projectiles coming from open windows within the community. All you have to do is take a screen out. So, I probably would be voting not in favor of the, the amendments as suggested or requested.
Thank you, Member Butler. Other comments from council? Anything from Acting Mayor Sands or Paula, if you have anything to share?
I had asked Code Director, Mr. Paskey, to, to come, particularly Member Falls' concern about the, the process and that the work was done before we actually voted on it. And I, that was my question to him was, do you recall how that happened and what, what statement was included in that?
I, I did receive a phone call from Mr. Kessler a month ago or so stating after he came here that, and I, I thought he addressed you on it, that they needed to finish the project to some degree to obtain their state certification from the State Building Department. And my experience, I, I can agree with that. That probably was necessary for them to get their certificate of occupancy. But he stated that, you know, he knew he's taking a gamble and a risk and if it did not pass, they would have to adjust accordingly. So...
Thank you very much.
My only comment is to please not associate it with the Bounty on the Bricks because I actually brought to the Bounty on the Bricks people the ordinances that we normally use for the other street closures. So, just trying to separate them from that.
We will keep those issues separate.
We'll call it X, X, whatever.
I do have a couple of comments in general on this. Still, I think one is, is we're talking about process and procedure. It's clear that there's, over the years, there's been a different level of acceptance as to what someone can build extending over the sidewalk. There are, above Court Side, there are bay structures that are all the way up the height of the building from the second floor up and those extend quite a bit out into the sidewalk. If you look at some of the existing porches or balcony structures that are all up and down Court Street, or if you drive around the perimeter of Court Street and look at the residential buildings, almost all of them have porches. And so, if a porch is simply as a safety thing, if a porch is dangerous in and of itself, I, I think that we can't apply that standard in this one case, just saying that all porches present some kind of danger. I also think that the, has been, has been recognized by everyone, I think, is that we really appreciate the reinvestment in this structure uptown. We've, we've seen many buildings go empty for many years and to see this one get new life into it, I think everyone appreciates regardless of how they might feel about the balcony. So, I want to thank the developers for, for what they're doing and whatever the outcome is, I, I think that your work is appreciated on that building. Do we have responses or...
I think, I think porches are different. They're not in the right-of-way. And that's what we are concerned with here is a right-of-way. And so, I think that just to con, you know, compare it with balconies and what people do on their private property is, is a different issue. There may be a safety issue. We have addressed some of that by saying, you know, you can't have a big party out on your porch roof. And we have addressed that. But this is a right-of-way issue and so it's another level of, of looking at it. And I think that that, what you've just said, it kind of, it follows what Chris is saying. Now, there's an expectation. Well, there's porches. Now, we're going to have balconies and there's balconies there. I would, I would submit that most of the balconies have, were grandfathered. However, if they're going to rebuild up or the building goes for a major upgrade, they're going to run into the same issue. So, you know, and I think that with this process, I will request the, the planning commission to look specifically at these issues with right-aways, you know, air right-aways, airspace, because, I mean, New York City dealt with it, but, you know, we haven't had to deal with it. I mean, who, who knows what the next request will be and below-ground right-aways. You know, there is that, that three-dimensional space. It's not just the, the, you know, fence on the street. So, I think that that's important lessons to take away from this. It's always bad to be kind of the precedent-setting case when you go through things. We, you know, sorry that process and procedure sometimes is very long and difficult and boring, but sometimes that just is difficult when it's a issue when you're kind of the guinea pig.
Thank you. Yeah, Member Paskey?
I would like to kind of add to that or at least acknowledge the issue. One of the biggest issues that I see is one of clarity when it comes to code in terms of spelling out inches. There's been a lot of confusion since this all started in terms of what code, how code read. We've had, we've had city members come forward and say that, you know, now there, there is reading or an interpretation of code that says it can be 36 inches, which was an interesting, compelling argument that we all heard. Well, we heard it. And again, it's, there's a lot of ambiguity. There's a lot of gray areas. I view the 36-inch issue as being pretty much black and white and I interpreted it much different. However, my point being is that I, I believe that we really do need to go through and look at code and a lot of different code, city right-of-way, building over the right-of-way. I also view this particular property as being such that the renovation itself, as renovation took place, I believe that Gator Guys LLC realized that this particular structure that used to hang over the public right of way was immensely stout, and therefore to take an existing 11-foot structure, tear it down, and have 11 feet of red iron hanging over the city right of way is different in my lens than looking at a new build to where someone is now building a new out over this public right of way, as opposed to taking 11 feet and cutting it back. It's, to me, again, that's something that I think needs to be addressed in code, as to whether we're talking about a brand-new build, where the balcony doesn't exist, or a renovation that reveals structure that could be used as a balcony, or whatever kind of feature we're talking about. But again, my point being is I think that we need to do a much more thorough look through code to identify areas that don't speak directly to a number of different issues, but this is one in particular, in my mind.
Thank you. Are we ready to vote on this amendment? Seeing no further comments, all those in favor of the amendment to reduce the width or depth of this balcony from 36 inches to 24 inches, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign, aye.
Aye.
I want to make sure I got it right. So can we go straight down?
Opposed.
Opposed.
Opposed, opposed.
Yes.
I'm opposed.
Yes.
Opposed.
Okay, that's what I thought I heard. So it looks like the amendment fails four to three. So I would move adoption of ordinance 4413.
Second.
And we have a second. Do we have any comments on the ordinance that we haven't already mentioned? All those in favor of ordinance 4413, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, the same sign?
Aye.
Aye.
Looks like the ordinance passes four to three. Did I get that right, while you're?
That's what I heard.
Moving on to ordinances for second reading. Ordinance 4713, an ordinance providing for the issuance of $250,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the costs of acquiring and constructing improvements to East State Street and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 4913, an ordinance authorizing construction and construction engineering of the Columbus Road-Lancaster Street infrastructure improvement projects, introduced by Council Member Pappy. Ordinance 5213, for the replacement of water lines on Patton, Arden, and portions of Marietta Streets, utilizing in-house, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to purchase materials and labor, introduced by Member Butler. Ordinance 5313, an ordinance authorizing street paving and repairs, project number 276, introduced by myself. Ordinance 5413, an ordinance closing a portion of Court, Union, Washington, and State Streets on Saturday, July 20th to 1:00 a.m. on Sunday, July 21st, 2013, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival, introduced by me. Ordinance 5513, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26b1, city garage metered parking rates and regulations on Saturday, July 20th to 1:00 a.m., Sunday, July 21st, 2013, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival. Ordinance 5613, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival, on Saturday, July 20th to 1:00 a.m., Sunday, July 21st. Ordinance 5713, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on July 20th and 21st, 2013, during the Boogie on the Bricks Family Music and Arts Festival. Ordinance 5813, the last one for Boogie on the Bricks, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Section 13.04.10, unnecessary noise in the downtown area on July 21st, 2013, we have a 12 in the title there, I recognize that as a typo, for Boogie on the Bricks, a family music and arts festival. And now moving on to ordinances for first reading. We have ordinance 5913, an ordinance closing a portion of Court Street between Union and Washington on Saturday, August 10th, 2013, from 2:00 p.m. to midnight for the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser, introduced by Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Going straight from Boogie on the Bricks to Bounty on the Bricks. The next four ordinances, this one included in the following three, are all ordinances dealing with the Bounty on the Bricks, which is a new event, will be new this year, here in Athens. But before I get into that, for, I'd like to make a motion to amend 5913.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. The amendment is just a change in the times on the first ordinance for the street closing. The street closing will need to be, the street will need to be closed down at noon instead of 2:00, and with the bagging of the meters occurring at 8:00 a.m., as opposed to 11:00 a.m. on that particular day, on August 10th this summer.
Thank you. I have a motion to amend, to adjust one of the times. Do we have any comments on the amendment?
Just that that is correct, in order to close it and allow the time to bag the meters and the cycles to get any vehicles out.
When we say close, we just mean to vehicular traffic.
Correct.
Not just, you know, you can walk up and down, and it would actually probably be even nicer than certainly driving up and down the road.
All those in favor of the amendment, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign if you're opposed. The amendment passes.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, 5913 deals with the street closing, which, again, would be from noon until midnight on August 10th. Again, Bounty on the Bricks is an event that will be essentially a farm-to-table event taking place all the way down Court Street between Union and Washington Street. This, again, this closure time will allow for the setup of tents, tables, and so on and so forth. Again, to kind of keep going on through the remaining ordinances along this, or?
I'll read the number, and then you, unless you want, if you want to discuss all of them at once, I think that would be.
They're all related.
Okay, so go ahead and just make sure you're clear on exactly which ordinance you're speaking to.
Okay, for ordinance 6013, 6013 is suspending the enforcement of the Athens City Code Title VII, Section VII, for the city garage metered parking rates and regulations for Saturday, August 10th as well. So in other words, the parking garage will be, will be free from 5:00 p.m. until midnight on August 10th for Boogie on the Bricks. Ordinance 6113, which establishes a glass-free drinking zone for Bounty on the Bricks. Again, that glass-free drinking zone will be in effect from 10:00 p.m., I'm sorry, from 7:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. during the actual event itself. And then finally, 6213, which is an ordinance suspending the enforcement of the vending, peddling, and soliciting for August 10th, and that will also be in effect from 2:00 p.m., will be in effect from 2:00 p.m. to 11:00 p.m.
Thank you.
To allow for vending on, for Bounty on the Bricks.
Do we have any comments on this event?
Yeah, I just, back at the amendment to ordinance 5913, I thought that I had heard some discussion earlier that the reason for the change in time was that the chef and his crew need to set up a large tent for cooking this Bounty on the Bricks, and it will probably be across Court Street, down by the courthouse. And so that would make traffic impossible to maintain on the street. So that's the, that's the reason for the time change, I believe.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, Thorne, any other comments? Would the organizers like to comment tonight?
I think you've got it all covered this evening.
All right, well, thank you, thank you for your work on this.
Thank you.
So just to make sure I dot all the i's and cross the t's, I'm gonna read the titles of those ordinances that you spoke to. Ordinance 6013, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Title VII, Section 7.05.26b1, city garage metered parking rates and regulations on Saturday, August 10th, 2013, from 5:00 p.m. to midnight for the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser. Ordinance 6113, an ordinance establishing a glass-free drinking container zone during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser on Saturday, August 10th, 2013. Ordinance 6213, an ordinance suspending the enforcement of Athens City Code Chapter 11.04, vending, peddling, and soliciting, to allow vending in a designated area on August 10th, 2013, during the Bounty on the Bricks fundraiser. Moving to ordinance 6313, an ordinance amending, ordinance 4313, authorizing construction and construction engineering of the wastewater treatment plant improvements, project number 266, authorizing an inter-fund transfer and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 64, I'm sorry.
I need to, and I need to introduce it, I think. Yes.
I was going to seek suspension for that. That was, I believe this is the $65,000 OWD.
It is, it is.
It's just the addition to that ordinance that's already been passed by council, the increased money for fees from our.
So, Mr. President, I request that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
My second. Okay, we have a move to consider under suspension and a second.
And the reason being that we have a $65,000 administrative fee that's due.
That we didn't know about, and they're ready to proceed.
So we need to get that paid. All right. All those in favor of this suspension, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. This ordinance will not consider under suspension of the rules.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 6313.
Second.
And this particular ordinance, as explained by the auditor, and as mentioned in our committee meetings last week, adds an administrative fee of $65,023 to the total cost of the wastewater treatment plant improvements, which will bring the amount to $19,126,027. And, yes. So that, excuse me, and what it does is takes it from that $19,126,027 to $19,191,057. So it increases the total amount of the loan by the $65,000.
Okay. Any comments?
I think, just briefly, I was, Member Nysel and I were at the meeting with the auditor and the mayor and the safety director regarding this, and our understanding was that this was something from the state that was unexpected, and now we're dealing with those small consequences.
We will expect it.
The future.
It's a change in operating procedure.
It's a fee that we have to pay. My understanding is they can't roll it into the loan, but that we're gonna transfer this money from our sewer debt fund that does have some surplus. So that we can pay it, I believe they have to be prepared to pay this right away, to process the loan paperwork.
Okay. All those in favor of ordinance 6313, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign opposed? The ordinance 6313 is adopted. Ordinance 6413, an ordinance amending the 2013 appropriation ordinance, introduced by Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I am going to ask, do we need this one's, okay, we do not need this one to suspend. I was in, I was in error. This particular ordinance would appropriate $6,000 to the general fund, and this will cover our increased costs for the southeast Ohio regional jail. You might remember the math worksheet that was presented in committee last week, the rates have increased from $51 per day per prisoner to 53, and now recently the fund went up to 58. The $6,000 is what we think at this point, and a good educated estimate of what we'll need between now and the end of the year to pay those increased costs.
Any comments on ordinance 6413? I just have one, and that's that with the increasing costs, I hope that, I believe the city already is, but I hope that we're minimizing the amount of, minimizing the need for the city in any way that we can, in terms of sending people up there only when it's absolutely necessary. I'm sure that we already do that. Those are my thoughts, when we're considering the increased cost of this. Ordinance 6513, an ordinance providing for the issuance of, not to exceed, $720,000 of notes by the City of Athens, Ohio, in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of paying part of the costs of construction, of constructing street improvements in the University Estates area of the city and declaring an emergency. Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first of several ordinances that we'll see for the assessment process for the repair of certain streets on University Estates. And what this does is allows the issuance of the notes for the $720,000 that we'll need to borrow to pay for those, for those improvements to the roads.
Thank you. Any comments on ordinance 6513?
Just briefly, I'll mention this again likely when we vote on this, but I want to, again, applaud Member Nysel for taking a leadership role on this and working with the administration. It's, there's a lot of information, and this is a very challenging project, and again, I applaud her leadership on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the auditor and our counsel, Dennis Schwale, and also to Clerk of Counsel, Debbie Walker. It's a lot of extra work for her, but I think it's a good solution for the situation. Thank you.
Ordinance 6613, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to advertise and accept bids where necessary, to enter into contracts for the University Estates street improvements, project number 265, and declaring an emergency, introduced by Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. This particular ordinance, as stated, will authorize the service safety director for us to move forward now to advertise and accept the bids for the repairs at University Estates. There was some discussion about the $720,000 and which fund those, that will be taken from, and it's, as you'll see in the ordinance draft, it's Street Fund 220, that those funds will be, from which funds, from which funds they'll be used.
Any comments on ordinance 6613? Moving on to 6713, an ordinance amending the 2013 part-time and seasonal staffing ordinance, introduced by Member Nysel.
Thank you, Mr. President. As we discussed last week, oh, yes, I'm sorry. I request that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
A second.
You have a second.
The reason being that this is for seasonal staffing that are needed immediately with the recreation department.
We have a motion to suspend the rules and a second. All those in favor of suspending the rules on this ordinance, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of ordinance 6713.
Second.
And as we mentioned earlier, these are for the part-time seasonal workers for the recreation department, and what we are doing is putting the staffing number at four. I do believe we could potentially have five, but at this point, we've made a decision to work with the four seasonal workers. It's the busy time of year, it's when the grass is growing, and people are using the parks, so we definitely have a need for it.
Member Butler?
I just want to express my support for us moving forward with this as well. Earlier in last week, Member Patterson and I were at a rec advisory board meeting, and one of the benefits of switching to semesters is that they've been able to get a jump on the help for the yearly work this time of year in the pool. So we're benefiting on that level, but there is a need here for sure, so I want to express some support for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor of ordinance 6713, signal by saying aye. 6713, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Ordinance 6713 is passed under suspension of the rules. Ordinance 6813, an ordinance declaring certain vehicles no longer needed for a municipal purpose. And this is an ordinance that I've introduced. We have several vehicles that the city is looking to dispose of that we no longer need or are no longer in good enough shape for us to keep around. The first one is an '85 Chevy one-ton. There's a '96 Ford F-150, a '95 Jeep Cherokee, '97 Ford Crown Vic, 2003 Chevy Impala, and an '89 Chevy pickup. Do we have any questions or comments on disposal of these vehicles? Is, Paula, are any of these candidates for donation to the University or nonstop?
I don't see what happened to APD's vehicle that was supposed to go to Coolville. Did we do that in a previous one?
We did mention in the committee meeting that that was a possibility, I think, for that being done.
I just don't see it identified here. So it's obviously not part of this one, so at this point in time, I would say these are old and moldy. There may be some transfer of the 2003 Chevy Impala, but I'm not sure at this time.
And I know you mentioned, I believe it was last week, that one of our vehicles we're getting rid of is an old police vehicle that we'll be replacing with a more efficient Ford, a used Ford. Is that still in the works?
They already, it has already occurred.
That's happened already.
A Ford Focus.
It's great to see that.
Local lot.
I saw that.
Okay.
Just one second. Okay. This, it is the Chevy Impala, actually, that is proposed to be donated to, is that Coolville? It's misidentified by department, EPW.
Okay. I was going to say that makes no sense to me because it has the, so yes, then.
We've done this with a number of vehicles over the years. We try to find homes and other municipalities or organizations that might need them. All right. Moving on to ordinance 6813. That's the one I just, that's the one we just discussed. Ordinance 6913, an ordinance authorizing the service safety director to execute a lease with the First Presbyterian Church of Athens, Inc. of Athens, Ohio, for the rental of in-laws 15 and 17 in the City of Athens and declaring an emergency. Member Patterson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this is a lease, an extension of an existing lease. The current lease is set to expire July 29th of 2013, and so this particular lease would continue, would commence when passed on July 9th of 2013. It's, it will be a 3% incremental increase for the next three years in terms of the lease agreement, the amounts. For year one, it would go up to $43,046. For 2014 to '15, it would be $44,337. And then for year 2015-'16, it would be 45,667, again, with a 3% increase annually on that particular property. And I believe that, correct me if I'm wrong, that that's 11 and 13 North Congress.
North College.
Oh, correct, North College. I'm sorry.
I did reach out to them, and the answers were no, all the way across the board, not interested. What I was seeking was perhaps just a one-year extension while we turned through and looked at some other possibilities. So that, and the answers were no, no, and no across the. So we've got three years now, so I won't let that drop and try to determine what some other avenues may be. The police chief came to me and suggested metering the college street lot as opposed to the long-term monthly parking. They were not agreeable to us leasing the portion that the police department utilizes.
Oh, and we do need a number of those spots quite badly. Is, this isn't something that we need immediately. We still have time to read it one or two more times. I did notice it has an emergency measure, so it can be effective immediately once we do vote on it. Resolution for first reading, resolution R7-13, a resolution appointing an assessment equalization board relative to the construction of street improvements in a portion of the area of the city known as University Estates, fixing the time and place for such board to hear objections to assessments and declaring an emergency. Member Naisley.
Thank you, Mr. President. I request that we consider this under suspension of the rules.
Second.
And the reason for the suspension?
The reason being that we have a June 5th meeting for the Equalization Assessment Board.
Any comments on suspension of the rules on this? All those in favor of suspending the rules on ordinance R7-13, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Rules are suspended.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move adoption of the resolution 713.
Second.
And this particular resolution is the title states, appoints an assessment board. This is a volunteer citizen board that will meet one time to review objections to the assessments of the University Estates. The people have been named in the ordinance. They're David Descutner, John Garsky, and Linda Phillips, and they will meet at 1:30 on June 5th to review those objections.
Thank you. Do we have questions or comments on this resolution? We'd like to thank those that have volunteered their time to help the city deal with this issue. So we have suspended the rules on this resolution. We had a motion for a second to adopt the resolution. All those in favor of resolution 713, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Resolution 713 is adopted. Moving on to announcements and other business, and we have at least one.
I would like to move that we approve the financial reports as submitted by the auditor to the city council.
Second.
All right. All those in favor of approving the auditor's reports.
April, April.
Fourth of the month of April. Signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. All right, we approve your reports for April. Next, we have, we do have a notice here that we need a reappointment, and Mayor Wile would like to reappoint Barbara Fiocchi of 305 East State Street to the Athens Rec Advisory Committee. And this would be for a term extending from July 1st, 2013, through June 30th, 2015.
Fiocchi.
Sorry?
Fiocchi.
Fiocchi.
It's Italian.
I move that we, that we reappoint her.
Second.
All right. Any comments on this reappointment?
Thank you.
Yes.
To the people who serve on the rec advisory board, because I know they're in the midst of a long-range plan that Kent and Steve and the city planner have been working on along with Rich, and it does take a lot of time. So we appreciate it.
Do we usually vote on these? I think we do. So all those in favor of reappointing Barbara Fiocchi to the rec advisory board, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, same sign. All right. Well, thank you, Barbara, for serving the city and continuing to, for the near future. Moving on to an opportunity for citizens to speak on, wait, hold on. Did we have any committee meetings or other announcements that we need to?
Finance and personnel.
Do we need to?
Of course.
Planning and development.
Member Butler.
Thank you.
That's what we'll discuss.
Safety, city safety. And am I correct in understanding that we will likely not be meeting on Monday, but rather Tuesday?
Tuesday.
Yes, we'll, we just need three members to be on the record as had called for the session.
I'd like a special session on Tuesday, please.
And I would, too.
Okay. Do we have a third member? Would you like a special session on Tuesday?
Sure.
So I'd make sure it's reflected in the minutes.
Yes.
So please tune in for a special meeting of council immediately following, do we want to do that special session before or after? I mean, it's probably, we need to do it after. Well, we'll get the final agenda out later this week, but look for a special session next week for your council. Anything else? All right. So we have an opportunity for citizens to speak on items that we did not cover on our agenda tonight. I don't see too many people out there this evening, but is there anyone that would like to speak to us? All right. So moving on to adjournment, and we'll see you all next week.